You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the November 10th meeting for the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome everyone to the November Long Beach Town Council meeting. Let's please stand for the.
Pledge of the agency to the flag of the United States of America and to theary all that which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Meg. Could you do roll call?
President. President Schmidt.
Here.
Anita Remigius.
Present.
Cindy Levy.
Here.
Colleen Lane.
Here.
Need to remember Kendra Bartlett is absent. Chief Swiss tech is also absent. Attorney Willoughby. Clerk Collins, I am present, and that concludes roll.
Thank you. I have no opening remarks.
So actually, I should have caught this when I reviewed that the approval of the minutes can actually be included in under the consent agenda. So if we want to just, it would be noted in the minutes that the approval of last month's minutes is part of that consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
So both the October 13th and October 17th will be included?
Yes, just I would say let's just amend the agenda to make that clarification, then she'll correct that.
Okay.
So maybe do both of those together as a motion to, if you're inclined, to make that amendment and approve it all in one motion.
Okay, I would make the motion to include the meeting minutes in with the consent agenda.
And I would also note that the quarterly memo at the bottom is still on the agenda, although it is quarterly, so no memo was provided to council at this meeting. You were provided one at the last meeting and then at the end of the year, you'll be provided another one.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So you made a motion for the consent agenda to include October 13th and October 17th minutes?
Do we have a second?
I was second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll make the motion seconded by Cindy. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Public comments. Seeing no one in the audience here, do we have any public comments on Zoom? Seeing no public comments, we'll move on to committee reports. Police Department Chief Swiss Deck is not here tonight, but I have his, I'll read his October 2025 incident report summary. The Long Beach Police Department responded to 326 calls for service when compared to 388 calls for service in 2024. For a decrease of 62 calls for service during the month of October, 10 incident reports were documented, a total of six individuals were arrested, one felony arrest for possession of methamphetamine, two misdemeanor arrests for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated, one misdemeanor arrest for driving while suspended, one misdemeanor arrest for operating a motor vehicle without ever obtaining a license, and one misdemeanor arrest for possession of marijuana. Dunland Beach got 42 hours and 142 miles and Michiana Shores got 49 hours and 155 miles. That's the summary of the police report. Any questions?
Nope.
Town administrator is not here tonight, so we'll won't have that report. Volunteer Fire Department, Dave.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is a report for, let me get the right report.
I can help you out with that if you're.
I need all the help I can get. This is a report for year-to-date activity through October 31st. On the fire call side, we stand at 93 calls so far this year, and that is in comparison to 79 the year before. 63 of the calls have been in Long Beach, 28 have been in Dunland, and two was mutual aid for Michiana Shores. On the breakdown of the call type, we had one fire in October. We had hazardous condition, which could have been power line probably. False alarms, we had four for a total of six calls. One thing that I'll note is year-to-date, our department has had 55 false alarms out of 93 calls. And if I go back up to the Dunland Beach call, which we do not support, we supply mutual aid for Michiana Shores because they have the Dunland contract. We had 28 calls in Dunland. And there is one entity in Dunland that is causing all the false trips. So if it was in Long Beach, we could take action, but because it's Dunland Beach, I'm not sure what, and we're not the, we're not the department for Dunland, so, but it is frustrating. Just the other night, we had two calls in the same location, and it truly becomes the issue of the boy who cried wolf. Average turnout of members per call stands at seven. It's an 18% increase in calls, fire calls for year-to-date. Then the medical side, we're at 95. That's in comparison to 100 the year before at this point in time. 93 of the calls have been in Long Beach, one in Dunland, and one was in Michiana Shores for mutual aid for a medical call. The month itself, we had one respiratory call, two personal injury calls, three sick persons, one lift assist. The average turnout of first responders per call stands at four members. Our response time for fire stands at 4.45 minutes, and our medical call is .459, almost five minutes, so per call. And the members of the department have donated to the town 2,705 hours. One item that for new council members, we had, we had a call, maybe within the last 10 days where the call came out with 13, I believe, 1309 Lake Shore Drive for a medical call. And I responded, couldn't find 1309. It turns out it's 1309 in Michigan City. And it, it always has been a problem. It continues to be when people had landlines in their homes. It was more of an issue, but now with cell phones, and I think the 911 center does a good job of saying, where do you live or where are you calling from, Long Beach or Michigan City? Because between 1300 and 1999 in Long Beach, there are those homes with those addresses in Michigan City. So just FYI, that concludes my reporting. Any questions?
I just have a quick one again about the false alarms, which has been brought up during the year. So the, the address or whatever entity that's responsible for 28 of the calls, even though it's mutual aid, is there a reason or a way now for anyone to contact somebody first before you all go out there? Is that not protocol? I just, I don't know.
Well, it's, I look at and say it's dangerous. It's dangerous when you could have 10 people in their personal cars driving to a call. You know, sometimes you have anxiety and, you know, adrenaline is going, driving big pieces of equipment on the road can be dangerous at times. But what we have learned, especially with this address, is likelihood it's not going to be, well, what we have done is say, in some cases, we'll stand by here and wait to see what happens. However, within the last two weeks, there was a call for that address, and their furnace in the lower level, I'm gonna say it, caught on fire, but there was smoke in, in the entire building. So you can't ignore these calls. We won't do that. But I was talking to the manager of the facility, and I, he said, what we try to do is if something's, I said, has anyone talked to the owners? Because the building is owned by someone or some entity, and then the restaurant operation is, they're not the same. And they, the manager had said that the, they have been in touch with the building owners and, but to not, I'm not sure what that meant, if anything's been done, but he did, the manager said, we try to call you off as soon as possible, so. But I guess it's one of the things that we're, we, we just don't have control over that jurisdiction, but we want to be there for our, our cohorts in Michiana in case there was, because it happened to be, there was a, so it's just not a good situation. And I, I think our, our department, we're gonna, I believe, I'm going to recommend we get together with Michiana and say, what, what can we do from a legal standpoint? So.
That's nice. The manager is at least willing to work with you, it seems like, to call you off as soon as possible.
But it, it, it does, it scares me for people driving, but then where we become so complacent, we don't go, and then there's actually a need. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Want this off?
The fire commission did not meet. NERC C, Colleen.
NERC C did not meet either.
Public Works Kendra is not here. Stormwater Board Cindy.
Next meeting is in December.
Park Board, I believe we have Zach on Zoom.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, you're up, Zach.
All right. So, yeah, we met on October the 28th. I had a relatively short meeting this time of year. The, I'm just gonna hit the highlights, so the tennis and park board project for the community center, that area, that whole park area, we've got RFI drafts out to 10 different firms. We've got a November the 21st deadline for responses, and that's just a request for information. Land surveys are off to all of those 10 firms as well. So this is for them to come back to us with some sort of a proposal for how they would draw up, up to 20 different park elements that were under consideration after we had our public meetings to discuss the subject. So not, not significant drawings, so just a proposal for how they would, how they would give us a drawing set and what it would cost us to do something like that. We talked a lot about landscaping at Stop 29. This has been an ongoing discussion for, for the year, really. The boardwalk needs to be replaced from the street down to where the aluminum new section begins. It's a significant amount of, of boardwalk, a lot of stairs, a lot of four-by-four vertical piers that have to go in and get put into the ground with, with cement pilings. So it's an expensive project, a lot more than we had anticipated after we received a couple of quotes. We had a hard time getting estimates for this project. We, we put it out on Facebook, all sorts of public requests for quotations. We were only able to get three people at three different firms interested in quoting it. One of them declined to quote after looking at the project, and the other two quotes we have in hand, and we have had them for, for a little while now. We've gone with the low bidder, which is BC Decking and Framing, which is a local company out of Albo. They knew, they have not done work for us, but they do work in the town. They are registered with the town. So we have a building permit applied for and received, and we would like to proceed with BC Decking to do this project and try to get it done before the end of the year. I think the weather's gonna let up, and he's ready to get going on that as, as soon as possible. The issue on that, I've been talking with Meg about this, he is asking for a down payment. He's a small company, and he's got a lot of building materials going into it in the onset. So we've worked out that we would, he would submit invoice to us for $20,000, and that will cover a majority of his building materials, he believes, and the rest will be paid for upon completion. The total project cost is 85,700, which is significantly less than the next highest bidder. And it's definitely something we need to do. We've done repairs on this stop for the last two or three years with stairs that are falling through, repairing various sections of it that are becoming unlevel. So it's, it's something that needs to happen. So there's some new protocols in place for jobs that are over $50,000 with the town, and this is new information for us, new information for me. So Meg's been real patient with me about getting the proper information from our vendors and following the procedures we need to follow to pass internal audit or audit by Indianapolis. And I think we're, we're almost there on this one. We are gonna slightly exceed our budget for 2025 with this project if we pay him in full this year, which I would like to do. And Meg's got some more details there about exactly, or how, how much over we would be. I think it's somewhere in the, in the range of $10,000. We could either carry that over into 2026, or we could request to pull some of those funds from our, our carryover fund that we have. So I'll stop for questions.
My only question, and I think I'll ask Chris, is the town allowed to pay something upfront? It was always my understanding when I was on the park board that we couldn't pay for anything until it was completed, according to the State Board of Councils?
No, we can pay some, but there, there are some things that need to be addressed, as Zach said, so I'm not really sure if he's ultimately asking for approval, because I don't think you're there yet.
No, I don't think we're there yet for approval for extra funds.
Well, not extra, I don't need extra funds, no. I just need approval to proceed because it's, it's, this is also New Joy that any, any capital project over $50,000 has to be approved by town council.
It's not new, but I concede that new to perhaps you, you guys being aware. So Meg and I have talked about making sure there's some packets that are available, and I'll talk to you outside of this, but, yeah, we need to make sure that it is established on the record that you sought three quotes, that's required, and that it's being awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible, not bidder in this instance, but the person or entity providing the quote, which can come from your minutes if that's established, and if not, then it needs to be so unless you're prepared to make those representations tonight as to whom you sought out. But one question that wasn't clear, so just clarify for me, if there's an additional appropriation that's needed, that's going to require a public hearing, is there enough for this project?
So the park board has used a little under 60,000 of their 80,000 in capital for the year. Of course, I'm sorry, they have 60,000 left. I apologize. So they've used almost 21,000. There's $59,000 left. So they, they have plenty of cash balance to do an additional, and that could be done in December. It could be done in January if the project, in January, they could use their budget for next year, part of it. I don't know if they are interested in that. They do have plenty of cash balance. This project does need to get accomplished. So, but council should be aware that they would need an additional potentially of 20,000. Now, I can probably find some additional budget in some of their expense lines at the end of the year. So Zach is correct, it may only be 10,000, depending how we want to do that. There will be another resolution for various items concerning insurance and some other reclasses that need to be done, and that will come before council at the next meeting. And this would just be in a part of that where I would just make those reclasses between department lines. So, but to do the additional, as Chris said, do we need, we need a public hearing? So do we need two months then, or one? 10 days, yeah. So this, this would all happen at the December meeting, because I also need an additional on one or two other funds for capital items to clean up those funds for year end. So one was paving, and then, so again, as I stated in an email earlier, it's going to be a busy month and year end finishing up a few of these items, but.
So we realize that we can use funds from 2026 to cover the overage. We would prefer not to do that. We'd prefer to start with a clean slate in '26. That would be our preference, and to cover the remaining balance, and hopefully it'll be in the range of $10,000 with, with funds on our balance sheet.
Meg, can I ask real quick a question?
Sure.
And, and probably to Zach as well.
Hi, Trista.
Hi. I was just looking at the end of October financial report, and you kind of hinted already, but maybe didn't have time to look at it real close. It, it looks to me like they've only spent, I'm gonna say approximately half of the overall budget for the year in park. 233,000 was budgeted and only about 105 has been spent, so landscape management contractual service looks like there's a big chunk left yet, some park tree care, even just, and park events as well, even just in those couple lines, it looks like there's enough to do a transfer, and you wouldn't need an additional appropriation.
And that's what I'm talking about. I, I'm sorry if I'm not being clear. I, I realize we do have funds in other areas, that's what I was hoping we could use. We do have a Stop 24 project where we're going to clean up invasive species on that stop before the end of the year, so that's going to take up some of that landscaping budget.
How much do you think, Zach?
Oh, I wish that I'd looked at that before we started. I don't know, I could email that to you tomorrow. I've got the estimate for that on my computer. But I think we'll still be fine.
Either way, Parks has a very healthy balance where the amount we're discussing is, would be fine. So, and I think Trista is correct that we can, we probably don't even need an additional, but if we needed to do one, we can.
And my comment does not at all negate anything Chris has said about the bids and having on record about those other statutory requirements. I was just looking really quickly at some of the current spending situation.
Yeah, and I have all the requested information on file and emailed over to Meg as well for everything you're asking for, Chris. The only exception to that is I'm looking to find the vendor who declined to quote. I need to, I need to track down his information just to get that on the record, everything else I have.
Yep, and so with that, I, I think that if everybody's prepared to move, what I would suggest to the council, because this is also bare bones, and I recognize not every contractor has some elaborate form. Meg and I discussed, you know, not to let the attorneys ruin the party, but there's always some general provisions we want in here, including, you know, if there has to be any legal action to enforce or to go out, that you want to recoup your legal fees, etc. There's nothing that's material that I think that will drag this down. That provision can be fair and say, to the extent provided by law, prevailing party, but there's just a little bit more. So what I would suggest is that if you're inclined, and this is represented as the lowest responsive and responsible quote, that you approve it, subject to Meg being able to collect all the information so that the records becomes part of this, right? And two, that we add that language, and I can just, I have that addendum already, if that's okay with you, Zach, so that it, it won't be a drag on the process, and then it can get approved, and then in the next day or so, we can kind of hammer that language out that you could send back to BC. I don't anticipate that they're going to have any objection to it, but it's.
I don't either. That's fine by me.
And then Meg and I talked about in general, just for these simple things, because they happen so often, and it's just one that happened to, you know, come up and bite them, but to just generally have an, an addendum exhibit that we can plug on so that everybody's aware. And then I will make sure, because I think the park board, other than Chief Swiss Deck, I think the park, Chief Swiss Deck works with streets and, and water and that, but the park board is the other active entity. So I do have a packet that I'll send to you, Zach, that you can share with it. Most of it won't apply to you, but at least it'll give you the basics in the future so that you have, just informational purposes.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. That'd be really helpful. I probably would have, I would have been ready with all this probably a few weeks ago had I known in advance, and I think it, maybe I said it was new information coming from the state, but I, I think it was new to me. We've done a lot of projects over the last eight or so years, and I, I don't think I've had to provide this level of information on prior projects. But I'm happy to do it.
Okay. I would make a motion. I would make a motion that council approves the park board move forward on this, providing Chris gets together with Zach and they get an actual proposal rather than just an estimate and get the proper wording in there, in the proposal.
Yeah, make sure that Meg has the information she needs to just make sure we're memorialize that they sought three quotes. They don't have to receive three quotes.
Okay. And the information that Meg needs to show that you sought three quotes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Zach, anything else?
Yeah, I should have saved that to last. So I talked about 24 on the evasives. We're gonna, we're gonna get that work done. We've got a lot of evasives at, at that stop that we're hoping to clean up, which is going to be good. We'll be using PISO for that. And a couple of topics that have hit park board meetings, I wouldn't normally bring these up, but they've been discussed in several meetings ongoing, and I just want to get them out there. There's been some residents near Stop 19 that are asking for matting and other small things to be done at Stop 19 to make it easier for folks to get from the bottom of the stairs to the stairs that lead down to the beach that are actually completely covered up by sand at this time. So we've, we've been back and forth in several different meetings about this, and it's the consensus of the Parks Board that no work needs to be done at Stop 19 to provide better beach access. It's really one of the most accessible, most accessible access points we've got in the town. There's a little bit of dune grass growing towards the middle of the path that happens every year, but people come walk on that and widen that out. And we just don't agree that any funds need to be spent at Stop 19 to make that more accessible. It's a, it's a perfectly accessible stop as it is. So that's Stop 19, and we'll look, we'll continue to look at that. If people want to continue to come to park floor meetings, we'll, we'll, we'll take it up. And then Stop 22 has been brought up, and, and we do agree that the, the stairs at Stop 22 are shallow. They're a little bit hard to, to climb. There's one step that's a little bit steeper than the other steps, and it's just, over time, I think the water is, has done some damage to that. So we are going to get some estimates to see what we can do to either replace or repair the metal access stairs from the base of 22 down to the sand. Just wanted to get that on the record. That'll be a '26 project. And that is it.
And can I add one other thing, just as a point of, as I sit here and think, Zach, in terms of the, the reference to being new, I, I do want to point out that there is a new requirement or newer that Meg has to abide by, which is filing these contracts and, and putting them downstate. So that might have been the overlap of some of this discussion in the amounts is the, the making sure that these contracts are filed when there are a certain amount. So the process is generally in the past, you know, that, those have been implemented. tho- those have been in place, but the filing of it also makes a little bit more just to make sure everything's in line with State Board of Accounts.
Sure. And all and all I've asked for to make it easier for us is some sort of an outline of what is it that you need to have for what level of project? In an easy to read format, and then we'll just take that and and we'll get all the information upfront and bring it to you guys when we're ready.
Sounds good. Anything else, Zach?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Community Center Anita.
The community center management team met on November 3rd. We reviewed paint estimates from one company. We're looking at painting and doing repairs on the exterior of the community center as well as various interior rooms, including the kitchen, the gym, the stage area, the courtyard where Susan Vising holds her girlfriend sales, and then the courtyard that's outside. We'll continue to look at those and we also talked about how community center management team works to help lower costs so that we can continue to work on upgrades in the community center. We are fully rented and we are having more people interested like last year. A family rented it rented the gym for the entire week for a family reunion. So what we're hoping is that by making the kitchen more desirable, even though you cannot cook in the kitchen, it just its appearances and we're going to continue on that. We haven't made any decisions, but we're hopeful that the community center will continue to be the bright spot that it is. And we're looking forward to, we do have a meeting December 1st, but I guess we can mention the holiday market that's December 6th in the community center. And our next meeting, as I said, is December 1st.
I've got one question. Are you guys get get three bids for painting?
We're working on it. We just talked about the first. I got the first one pretty quickly, so we are working on that.
Thank you. Budget and finance, Meg.
We met on November 4th and bank recs for October were completed. Monthly financials, including the revenue and expense reports, the cash allocation report and fund projections were distributed to council and department heads. And I will update the capital plan expenses this week and then I'll distribute those. The water rate study and the water rate ordinance were briefly discussed and are on the agenda this evening. And we discussed ordering the ordering of a 550 snowplow truck for the street department. And the committee is recommending to allow Chief Swisstech to order that plow truck a little bit sooner than he was planning. So on our capital plan, it was going to be paid for in 2027. And the committee looked at the 2026 capital plan and just our fund projections relative to where we would pay for this from. And we recommend allowing chief to order it where it would be paid for in Q4 of 2026 instead of early 2027. The reason for that is to capture the the costs just keep going up. So by ordering it a little earlier and these these larger vehicles are tending to take a little bit as well. So we just assured him that it could be afforded in 2026 and if it pushes into 2027. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 2nd at 11 a.m.
Thank you. Human Resources Cindy.
The Human Resources Committee has. But our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 19th at 9:30 a.m.
Thank you. Tree Board Ellen.
Hi, yes, I'm here. We did not meet this month, but we're working diligently on our tree trimming and removal project and we're doing this with with the Parks Board too, because they have some stuff they need done in some of the parks. I've we've assembled a whole list. Everybody has it. If you would all like a copy of it, I can send you all a copy of it. It's about set. We need to remove about 17 trees. We got stumps to take out and a lot of trimming to do. I've already contacted four different tree services and I've heard back from two. I'm waiting to hear from the other two. And then we're supposed to meet this Friday at 8 o'clock at the town town hall with Chief and Tom and Tree Board to take these, the people that might want to do the bidding on this and take them around and show them the trees and what we really need to have done around the town. So right now, that's all I have to say. So. But take some time, but I'm I've gotten some good, got some feedback right away. So I'm hoping by tomorrow I have these four people, you know, saying that will do this. Any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you so much. Anybody have?
I just have a quick comment. Thank you for following up because I think that was key. I think there were issues in the past that you and that you and your committee and chief and Tom talked about where you would get different estimates because people weren't sure. The the companies that would come out and that you'd be like trim this branch, but other people would think it was a whole tree. So.
Right. We, yeah, we we do. Yeah, we do.
Coming out to see what exactly you want done.
Yeah, we've gotten a little bit better from last year because I I don't know how many times I had to go out to find the tree that was missing. So now we do addresses. We've been very diligent about that, even into the parks. And we've gotten Tom on board. He now marks the trees that are that we're talking about with yellow landscape.
Green.
Green. He has green. And then we're going to go around and label the ones that just need trimming. So that's why and chief and Tom are the ones that came up with doing this. We'll split them up and they'll we'll take some to do some of the stop, some of the things that we need to do and then we'll flip flop. So they get to see everything that we need to have done. So we're getting there. We're getting onto a system and the tree ordinance and the tree board is working diligently to become an integral part of the the community.
Thank you, Ellen. The building commission doesn't meet until this Friday. The B Z A, I don't think they have any new agenda items.
I think we just had what we reported on last month, right? Yeah, so the meeting, I have not received any petitions, so more than likely the meeting will be canceled. And I think it's it's this. Yeah, it would be this Wednesday, so it'll be canceled.
Okay, B Z A will be canceled for Wednesday. No agenda items. Advisory Plan Commission Anita.
Advisory Plan Commission met our October 20th meeting was moved to November 3rd. We met and discussed the, again, the update to the the survey to update the 2016 comprehensive plan. We are hoping that what has been sent out will be our final survey. So when we meet at our next meeting on November 17th, what our committee will be working on is how exactly to notify residents, how we will make available survey to residents. Our group McKenna says that a good result is 5 to 10% of the residents. So we're hoping that we can get better than that. So we really want to work with with the town and and figure out how we can do. You know, whether we will decide whether we wait until January, whether we send, you know, do a QR code, whether we do an email blast, how we do it. But we want to be thoughtful about how we do it to try and get the best response. So. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, Lakeshore Sewer. We have nothing new on that. We're still waiting for a response. Town sign Cindy.
Yes, I would like council approval to order a survey of the area on Chassleton near Hacienda for the town sign project, the brick pillars. And then secondly, we want to do a prototype of the new beach stop signs. You know, the ones similar to what we have now, the black with the white printing. And that cost should should be about $500 for the prototype. I'm not sure of the survey exactly how much that would be. It's just a small area for the sign near Hacienda.
On both sides?
Yes.
Okay, that that's up to council if we want to find out what it's going to cost. Is that possible?
Can we get an estimate for the survey? If you call Steve Thade, he'll give you an estimate.
One across the street was more expensive, but that was probably a much larger and in-depth area. But I guess with those properties and the street and maybe just find out.
Look at the cost of the survey, but possibly go ahead for the prototype of the black sign.
Again, up to council. I think 500 is would be fine.
Yeah, I'd make a motion to move forward with the prototype of the signs for $500.
I'll second that, the motion for the prototype of the sign.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
How do we? How do you figure out where the survey? I mean, I don't. I don't understand where. How do you figure out where exactly the survey? What will the survey entail? Like where where?
Seeing how much room, you know, is on town property.
Do you know where exactly it's going to go?
I don't. I know it's near Hacienda, but I don't know, you know, the exact spot. Maybe the survey would probably help determine that.
Because originally.
We don't know where the sign is now, I would think.
Microphone. Yeah, just.
Microphone, microphone. Yeah, I don't know how you send Thade out there, ask him what the estimate is and just say, we don't know exactly where.
Yeah, I think it's near where the sign is now and then across the street from there.
I I don't.
Okay, I'd verify that with Kendra because it used to be where the fence, the fence is for the golf course. That's where they were going to put it before and then right across the street. But I don't think the town owns the property across the street from there.
Okay. Be important to know.
And I don't know. Did we? I mean, I don't know that we ever decided that we would have them on both sides anyhow, so. And that we don't know what it would cost to do both sides. So maybe he can.
Well, yeah, the plan included both sides. On the Chassleton, just on Chassleton.
Yeah, starting just there, that one location.
Well, if we can just narrow down what where what it would cover, so we're not paying for a survey that is not we wouldn't need proportions that we wouldn't need.
I would ask Steve to do a survey of the town right away from one entrance of Hacienda to that the fence on the golf course.
Which entrance of Hacienda?
The first one closest to the highway. Because if the sign ultimately can only go where it is now.
So the one that leads into?
Yeah, yeah.
That leads into where you go left, a left to the parking lot?
Right.
Not the, okay.
Right, yeah, I'd get a survey of that whole. I mean, it's just the town right away that he's surveying.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Future Lakeshore Drive paving project update. We've got a proposal from Haas later on the in the agenda tonight that we'll talk about and we'll get that up on the website. We did tell our residents that.
President Trump is pushing us towards another crash equals the one of 1929. I think that's the truth. So he's doing all those things.
John Coca. Must have been muted on accident. Okay, we should be okay. I muted.
Okay. So we'll talk about that a little bit later, but we'll get those document, new documents that we have up on the website and the residents really wanted, and we did sort of promise them another workshop. And we are sort of oppressed for time. It's not like we have to make a decision in now or in December, but probably fairly soon if we're going to participate in the grant. So how do we want to schedule another workshop?
I I would think talking with Mark would be good, but also if we have no updates yet from Haas. So we can schedule it. I guess it depends. Yeah, what.
I guess it depends when we get when we get a, I mean, we have a proposal about what they're going to do, the scope of what they're going to do. But we don't have the plan yet.
Right. So I I don't know if it's going to be beneficial to hold another one until we have.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Unless Haas needs to move forward with some of those council decisions. I don't know the answer to that, but.
Well, maybe we can.
We could talk. That's why I think maybe speaking with Mark, but.
I think that might be a good idea to wait until he'll be back Wednesday. So maybe we can talk to him Thursday and let him know that, you know, where are we? Or he can maybe reach out to Sam and Ryan and say, you know, where do you think we might be in two weeks or maybe the first weekend December after Thanksgiving and see if we can look at a date that might be available for the residents and.
Okay, that sounds good to me. So.
I guess keeping in mind, you know, the holidays and and we may have to have a typically, we have a special council meeting at year end as well. That's a ways away, but it will come fast.
Okay, when chief gets back, we'll have him talk to Sam and Ryan and see what their position is on when we should hold the next workshop. But I agree with you. We should have some more information.
Thank you.
Update on water rate study workshop.
Yes, so we had a workshop with council to go over the water rate study that Senator Dalton prepared. And hopefully council was able to ask any questions and all left with a good understanding of what we are trying to do and all of the items that play into this this study. So following up with after the workshop, Trista distributed four different versions of the study to council prior to this meeting. And the differences in the studies are that one there will be an increase from Michigan City for what they charge us for the water we purchase from them. And so one of the studies included a percentage increase for what is currently unknown. We don't know the exact amount that they will increase and we don't know when they will put that increase through. And then another version did not include that Michigan City increase. And then a third version included a certain amount for capital reserve that the town will work towards saving. And then the fourth version had a different amount for that capital reserve. So council has had time to look at those. And then later on this agenda, we're going to discuss the water ordinance and the last few items that council needs to make decisions on for what will ultimately be our water rate increase. And then what will be reflected in that water rate ordinance. So that's the update.
So do we discuss now what option we like?
So the ordinance comes up. The first reading is later on the agenda. That's up. I mean, we can move it.
I think we're pretty flexible.
That's fine. And Trista, Trista is on.
Yeah, I mean, I like option D because it still gives people, you know, with 1,000 gallons, they still get a decrease in their water. We have no idea what Michigan City is going to charge us and I believe option D is with a 30% increase for Michigan City.
I think that's correct. Yes.
Yes, that's right. And then the 150,000 of building capital reserve for the future projects.
This is.
Yeah, I think that too, that we should. Yeah, I think that too, that we should, you know, collect as much as we can for future capital projects. And I don't want to go through this again with the residents, I want to do it all at one time. So there's no way we can know what Michigan City is gonna charge at this point.
And then is council okay with that decision, knowing that it, it could be two months or it could be two years? You know, we don't know when they're going to put it through, so, just so that everybody understands.
I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. Okay, and then one other item is just those, the parcels, the vacant lots and the capital, including those parcels. And I believe everyone again understands. So these options did include those lots. So if council, you know, did not agree or support that, we would discuss that this evening.
And the lots pay for leaves and?
Leaf charge, fire protection and stormwater currently.
Stormwater, okay, but they don't pay for water.
Correct, no base charge and no usage.
Okay.
That was 152, or it was 12?
There's 152. My understanding is that the last time this was looked at, when the vacant lot ordinance was put in place back in maybe 2022, that 12 parcels were excluded because they were under .05 lot size percentage, I believe, which comes out to about 2,100 square feet. So anything above that, an account was set up in the system for each parcel.
So the, the 152, the discussion is then that they would not be, they would not be paying into the capital reserve. Or they would, that's our decision to make, whether we decide to add them into the 152 into. So I think we talked about the Oriole Trail where they want to do, you know, so that they can, it's so long that they can add stops into it, so if there's a water outage, then they can add that, but then the, I think that Greg talked, Greg Parrish, the superintendent, talked to how the pipes are 100 years old, so you never know when something is going to happen. So then that's our decision whether we add in the 152 vacant lots that were all looked at by.
With the understanding that that would then contribute to saving capital towards these future projects.
Correct.
Right.
And that was looked into by the Water Department in 2022, they looked at all of these lots.
Well, that's when, right, but that's when the water usage and there had been a few parcels that were being charged, usage, not usage, the water.
Did I say it was? I don't have my bill in front of me, sorry.
The capital charge, right?
No, just the.
The tap charge or something.
The base charge, the base charge.
Okay.
So the base charge, that, that looking at the vacant lots more made sure that those lots that had been charged, the base charge, they wouldn't have had any usage if they weren't using water, but that those charges dropped off of vacant lots. But then also that that fire protection was added to vacant lots at that time. So some of the capital, as Anita stated, the Lake Shore Drive pipes are in good shape, but they are 100 years old. The Lake Shore Drive water main, if one were to break, that could be a, a large cost. The water tower is also per the, the auditors that look at it. And we do the regular maintenance that we're supposed to. So that is also in good shape as far as we know, but it is also 102 years old. Per Greg, many of these things, we just can't anticipate when we're going to have an issue with them. The Oriole Trail main extension to Ridgemore is another project. Water valves on Oriole Trail, that's about $100,000 project. And then just if a water main again would break and it was beyond the town's scope of work, so we can repair for so long or fix to our capabilities. But if it was beyond the town's scope of work, then we would have to subcontract it out. So this is just after discussion with our Water Department. What, what that capital would be potentially going towards in the future. Also understanding that we are almost finished paying for the debt that was taken out 20 years ago and, you know, trying to plan so that we can hopefully pay upfront for some of the future projects instead of having to take out more debt in the future. Hopefully saving all residents money in the end.
Okay, thanks, Meg, anybody have any more questions for Meg? Okay.
And we do have Trista on as well, she can answer any, I believe we went, just so the public is aware, we went very in depthly into this water rate study, which can be made available to the public, I'm not sure how that works, Trista, if we can, what, what we should do with that, but it was looked at in depthly by council, so.
Okay. Moving on to new business appointment to budget and finance.
Okay, so we're just discussing and then, and then.
We're just discussing and then we've got the water rate study.
Ordinance, okay, perfect. I think I'm next with, yes, so Ryan McIntosh has come to the last meeting for the Budget and Finance, he had reached out to me with interest and after good discussions, he'll be a great addition. And we had one more vacancy to fill on that committee, so I was looking for his appointment to Budget and Finance.
Okay, I would make a motion to appoint Ryan McIntosh to Budget and Finance.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Open sealed bids for surplus vehicles. Kind of exciting, Meg.
So I, I was about to run back and I had my letter, I had it. No, it's okay, I had it on my desk and then I left it there when I came here. Oh, so what, what, what is that?
We need to make sure before you open, we read who it's from, what the bid is, the amount. And then at the end, if you approve any of these or you're taking them into consideration, I don't know what was advertised here to award it tonight or not. So I don't know, I haven't been involved in the process, so, but no matter what, announce whose, whose bid you're opening and the amount.
This bid is from Monte Thorson. Do I read the address?
I don't know which thing this is for.
Monte Thorson, a bid for the 2,000 Boston Whaler of $3,850. Believe I have these in order of the, the boat first. This is from Joseph Donnelly and his bid for the Boston Whaler of $5,585. This is also on the Boston Whaler, Robert J. Schultz with a bid amount of $4,050. This one also says Boston Whaler. This is submitted by Darren Beck with a bid amount of $7,500. And I believe that concluded the Whaler boat. So now we are on to the F250, 2014 plow truck. This first bid is from Steve Forker for $5,504. This bid is from James Mann Warren for 6,000 even. Next bid is from Bob Schultz for $8,900.
8,900?
$8,900. And the last bid on the truck. This bid is from Larry Wall for $10,685.
You ultimately take the vote to accept the highest bid for the 2,000 Boston Whaler was from Darren Beck and of Corinthian University. Don't know if that's, yeah, it's on behalf of the Chicago Corinthian Yacht Club Junior Fleet, Inc. Of 7,000. Just making sure.
7,000 even?
Yep, so it would be appropriate if you're inclined to.
Make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to accept that bid from Corinthian, Chicago Corinthian Yacht Club Junior Fleet, Inc.
I would make a motion to accept the bid for the 2,000 Boston Whaler with trailer in the amount of $7,000 from the Cor- Yeah, Corinthian.
We need to be, we need the record to reflect.
From the Corinthian.
Chicago Corinthian Yacht Club Junior Fleet, Inc. That corporation, yeah.
That corporation, as Chris just said.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
And then next, it would be appropriate, if inclined, the highest bid was from Larry Wall for the 2014 Ford F250 Super Duty 4x4 truck with plow package. And Mr. Wall bid an amount of $10,685.
I would make a motion to accept Larry Wall's bid of $10,685 for the Ford.
Here. For this.
The 2014 F250 Ford truck with a plow package.
Before we go further, it'd be appropriate, I'm sure you were going to, so let's give her opportunity to recuse herself.
Yes, I'll recuse myself.
Okay.
Now I'm asking for motion, right, or did you make the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Do we need to take all those?
No.
No.
Just need to vote, I'm noting that she recused herself.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And noted that Colleen recused herself. Okay.
And I'll practice for next meeting saying seven words in a row.
Okay, next we have Haas and Associates' Proposal for Civil Engineering Services for the Lake Shore Drive Improvement Project. We have the proposal here, did everyone get a chance to look over it?
Yes.
The proposal is for $79,900. It would suggest we put a not to exceed number. I'd suggest 90,000. That seem reasonable?
I have no idea, what's the, the proposal amount?
79,9.
So you want to do usually 10, right, 10 to 15% over? Yes. Let's just pause here for a minute while they discuss.
But there isn't an amount? The timing of when they need this approved? Because if they don't have the rest and they don't have everything in that, then it might be best to put that one off as well. Unless there's a time element. This is for services, so you, you can award it and you could make it higher if you would choose to for survey.
Survey is to be determined.
So we don't know, so it's, yeah, it's 79,9, but not including the survey, which there could be another amount. But that's unknown right now. So you could either vote to include it, but you don't want to give them a blank check, obviously. Or you could approve it as, as, and they can come back to you with a change order and or an addendum if appropriate.
Would that be your suggestion?
It is, I do note that there was a, a not to exceed number, but I, I think that it's fair, given that I haven't a clue on what that survey may be, and if they had it to be determined, might be appropriate to do that. You're gonna have, you're gonna have additional meetings, you're gonna have a workshop. We anticipate another special meeting, so that if it becomes urgent, you'll have plenty of time to, to consider that and maybe an addendum to this proposal.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve this proposal, proposal for $79,900 for the preliminary work for the Lake Shore Drive project, repaving project.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meg, can we get this put on the website under the Lake Shore Drive tab?
Yes, we can, I will make a note.
Thank you. Haas and Associates invoice number 17 for $3,909.60 approved payment for the 2024-2 CCMG. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of $3,909.60 to Haas and Associates invoice number 17.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Haas and Associates, 2024374-04 for $18,054.70 approved for payment for Long Beach Lake Shore Drive conceptual design, which is what we've already seen. Motion to approve?
I would, sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the payment of $18,054.70 for Haas and Associates invoice 2024374-04.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, resolution 2025-0013. In a moment, I got that.
I can, I can speak on this one. So, um, that will be coming, uh, within probably a week. So it's mostly complete, but there is uh, an additional part to the ordinance that, that we are just, Trista and I are still reviewing. So to give you enough time to review it for the, the December meeting, and this is a follow-up from the audit. And so it's just a new ordinance that, uh, will establish, it's not new, I apologize, it's amending an ordinance that was, and it's a resolution that was from 2016. And so we are making some changes to reflect, uh, it more correctly. And because it's a resolution, we can suspend the rules in December and approve it because I do have to report on it uh, in Gate, Gateway as part of a action plan again as a result of the audit.
Hey, we'll look for that.
Let me just clarify, because it's a resolution, we don't have to, we don't have to worry about that ordinance is where we have to worry. So that's all right. There's just that nuance. So.
Be approved in December.
Yeah. So if it's in December or one of your special meetings and something, as long as you have a majority that's present, you'll be able to pass that. So you won't be under time constraint.
Okay.
Thank you. So that will carry over to our December meeting or the next meeting with sufficient time to review it.
Okay. Um, Meg, I forgot to mention on that last thing for Hawes, the eighteen thousand, also put that on the website?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, resolution 2025-0014, a resolution reaffirming the capital asset policy of the town of Long Beach.
So council, uh, this is again as a result of the audit. And this will be a new resolution that will be on file and I will, uh, chief and his, actually just the, the town in general has good lists of much of our inventory and our assets, but there, uh, we have not been reporting on it as is required. So um, this is a resolution that explains, uh, exactly our, how we will account for our capital assets. This is the policy and then uh, we will report on them in the, the AFR yearly, on a yearly basis. And Trista, do you have anything to add since you're here? Or not really?
Um, I mean, I'm happy to answer questions. A lot of the language is kind of boilerplate. The point is that there has to be a policy in place that council has approved, AKA this resolution. Um, that sets a dollar value on the assets that will be reported through the annual financial report uh, as per state board requirement. We've chosen 10,000 currently because that will capture all of your rolling stock, your police cars and things. Um, and then of course also capture your larger items. You do, as you look through the list of things, um, if you decided that there's no sense in having a building value of 10,000 and instead you wanted that something over 100,000, we could change all that. Um, but we didn't find that there's a large listing of these types of things that would require distinction in the level. So to make everything just one dollar amount at 10,000 is simple. Um, as per state requirements, and it also lists the way that the depreciation is to be valued, which again relates to the way that uh, your assets are recorded and reported in the annual financial report. Um, again, pretty standard language that many towns and cities and counties use. Uh, gives a few definitions for a few different types of properties. Uh, assets, I mean, um, you'll see it sets out then the useful life as well, which relates to the depreciation. Ultimately, it sets few, uh, few procedures toward the last page and a half or so on how the inventory is supposed to be kept track, when it's supposed to be done. The fact that the clerk's office, uh, and the town administrator will work together on that. And again, it's just really to have some internal controls in place to make sure that the value of the assets of the town are reported properly on that annual basis.
Thanks, Trista. Any questions, council?
No.
Nope. Uh, I would make a motion to approve resolution number 2025-014, a resolution reaffirming the capital asset policy of the town of Long Beach. Do we have a second?
I'll second the resolution.
You don't have to say it. Uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Uh, first reading ordinance number 2025-07 salary and wages for 2026.
And so since this is first reading, um, Trista did catch one date that still said 2025 that I will change to 2026 when we, uh, approve this at the December meeting on second reading. So we could approve on first reading unless council had any changes or questions besides this date. Uh, I think it was in one of the paragraphs. So I'll find it and, and update that. But otherwise, this includes the raises that were approved, uh, by council. And we removed two employees who are no longer with the town. Uh, yeah, any questions? I know we looked at this at budget and finance in depthly.
The only thing, uh, tell, we talked about adding, um, the clerk treasurer as an, as an elected position into the longevity. If, um, the discussion of year, starting year one, because it's an elected position. And then there was the second issue, if we did do that, that even if someone served for, let's say, four years and then they left for four years and came back, that the longevity would then start all over again. So that was just a discussion at budget, at the budget and finance level, whether that would be something that would be added on. And I wasn't sure, you know, how that is brought up, if that's something that's brought up right now, if that would then change the terms.
Does longevity even come into play with, when I look at official?
That's what I'm looking. Um, it is. It's on the top paragraph of page two. Uh, I can read it if you want. The town will pay all full-time employees longevity compensation in the amount of $100 per year for the number of completed years of service attained by calendar year. The 100 for each year of service is for years one through 19, service years 20 to 29, full-time employees will receive 200 per year. Service years 30 plus full-time employees shall receive 300 per year of service. Eligibility for a longevity bonus begins after the employee's completion of three full years of employment. And this will be paid on the payroll in the succeeding year, not, no later than the second payroll in March. So it's after three full years of employment, uh, regular full-time employees. And actually, does it talk about part-time?
We talked about
in the handbook.
An adopt, an elected official.
I guess, Chris, what takes precedent? So this doesn't actually cover the entire entirety of it, because in the handbook, it mentions part-time employees, and if they've worked a certain amount of hours, they receive a percentage. So it's, it's either 50% or 75%. So I guess. So Trista, we may have to, if, if it's in here, it should be here in its entirety, right? So I may need to, um, sorry, this is separate from what you just brought, brought up, but, uh, so I may need to add that in before, uh, second reading. Okay, so back to.
Trista, do you remember? I mean, we, I thought we had, I, I just remember that discussion about an elected official. Do you reme-, I mean, I don't remember exactly where we had the language or if that was just something that, that the town, you know, the council could approve, or if, I, I just don't, I just know it kind of came up and I don't remember.
Sure. Conversation during the workshop was that an elected official could receive longevity if the council approves that and if it is in writing in the salary ordinance. Uh, many towns and cities do offer that for the first year term of an elected official, including council members and clerk treasurers. Um, many towns and cities do not include it. So it is very much simply up to the particular council, the five of you here in Long Beach for this year, preparing for the 2026 salary ordinance and how you would like to structure that. Um, the only caution I think, and Chris could confirm is, once you would include it for elected officials, I think it would become very difficult to pull it back in the future. Um, so just be mindful of that as you make your decision and, um, oftentimes because an elected term may only be for four years, an elected official would, would receive it. Um, at the end of the first year, or if you paid it in January, for example, for the immediate year prior. Uh, you could also include some language that says if an official were to leave office prior to the end of their term, that if they had already received the payment, they would prorate and return back, uh, the amount that would be considered unearned for having left early, depending on when the timing uh, is that you pay the longevity in the town. So.
And I did find that right above the holiday pay for 2026, it does refer to the clerk treasurer participating in the benefit programs. Um, so thank you. That's, that's exactly what I thought about our discussions. So. So we cannot, the same as the salary, you can't doubt, you can't pull back on the, something like the.
Clerk treasurer, the compensation level is set.
Right.
And I did just find the part-time for the longevity, which if you don't mind, I'll just read and then we can agree to add that into the salary ordinance. And it reads, regular part-time employees working at least 1,000 hours per calendar year will receive 50%, $50 per year of the longevity. Regular part-time employees working at least 1,500 hours per year will receive 75%, 70, $75 per year of the longevity benefit. So that would just be the part that probably should be reflected in here. And actually, this will be the first year that I will be paying that to a part, one part-time employee.
Going back to the part that, is there a reference to paying the clerk treasurer longevity or just benefits in general?
It just may participate in the full-time benefits programs, less deductions and withholdings when approved by the town council.
So I, I would say that we should just include, including, you know, provisions for longevity pay. But you might want to consider as Trista, you know, if there's any any, uh, changes, but you could pass it on first reading and still have those amendments, still have your public hearing. So that's what I suggest is with those amend, the amendments for the part-time as read, it's in the handbook and that clarification, a bit of clarification on the clerk treasurer.
And then we just have one part-time employee that would be that would be.
There, there could be more than one, but this will be the first year. It should be reflected in here because I'm going to be paying one employee who has, um, worked the full three years. So then based on those hours would receive actually 75%, which is $75. Okay. So this is year four for that employee.
Okay.
I just noticed that.
Meg, which is year four, 25 or 26?
26.
Okay.
So we will be paying it, but it should be in, that line should be in here.
Right, okay. I just want to make sure it wasn't something that we had to amend back for 25. So awesome, good.
Okay. So with that addition, yeah, I guess you guys still have to decide on what, what's being discussed, but, or we can do that at in December. Is that what I said?
If you're inclined, you could make the motion to approve that on first reading with those amendments.
I would make that motion to approve this on first reading with those amendments.
Which.
For the part-time employees as well as the clarification on clerk treasurer's eligibility for longevity.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
May I ask quickly? I'm sorry to interrupt her at the end. Anita, you also had mentioned the bridging, which we had discussed at the workshop as well, which is, um, right now, the salary ordinance is completely mute on, if you have an employee who leaves and comes back, are they entitled to the time having earned in the first stint of employment or not? Um, the bridging, of course, would allow them to use that essential credit time if they worked for two years and then came back. Uh, they wouldn't have to wait the entire, what is it, three, three years before it began. They would get credit for those first two. Again, it's completely the choice of the council. Um, communities are, are split on that issue as well. So whatever you deem appropriate, but.
I would kind of be a big Scrooge and say a big no to that. I don't know what the rest of you would say, but I don't know.
Well.
Often would that happen if somebody were?
Never know. Someone leaves departments, for instance, and, and, um, what I would suggest is that you put together some language so that you could see it together, that bridge language, and then it could still be included, but have it well in advance of the public hearing so that, one, that's posted and then two, that somebody, you know, whether it's Meg or somebody can propose uh, some language that you may or may not agree with.
Mm-hmm. And then we might be able to figure out cost better too. I mean, if someone was here for tw- 16 years and leaves for two years and then says, I want to come back in. I mean, then that's a big, it's a big, you know, a fairly big number. So. Okay. So is that language that Trista, you and Meg, you put that together? You don't put that together?
Meg and Trista could put that together.
Okay. So we'll put that bridging, somehow the bridging language together, Trista?
Yeah, we'll craft, um, a couple of different options that you can look at and you're exactly right, being able to plan ahead for it. Um, and having the policy in place, so that there's no question. Um, and that when payment does happen, it's as per the salary ordinance and state board is happy and then you can all be happy because of that too. So.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. First reading ordinance 2025-08 water rates. This, this ordinance was a little hard for me to understand.
Oh, wait, did you, you sent it later. It's okay. I'll find it here. Don't worry about it. No worries.
So does this ordinance here reflect what we discussed earlier on water rates? Cause I don't see anything about the increase for Michigan City.
I'm going to pull up if I might, Joy, while Meg is looking. The rates that you see in page three of the ordinance in section four, the top of page three should correspond, and I'm trying to open my copy here as I'm speaking. Um, it should correspond to option E of the rate study. Yes, thank goodness. Uh, so if you look at option D of your rate study, exhibit E with this page eight of 11 of the, of that PDF, you'll note that the metered rate per 1,000 gallons is listed at $4.60. The base charge is listed at $39.11. Those are both per connection. The capital reserve charge per parcel is at $10. Again, those are all monthly, of course. And then that fire protection charge is still listed because you will still be charging that as you currently are. And then that fire protection charge is still listed because you will still be charging that as you currently are. There's a notation that, that little section, but then on page one as well, that nothing is changing about the fire protection in any fashion, not in the definition of the parcels nor of the values. The dropdown in the rate as of this coming 2026, April into May, is exactly how it was listed in those previously listed ordinances. Something new to this ordinance that was not in the previous water rate ordinance is section five, point one and point two. Previously, section five regarding late payment charges was included in your ordinance. However, it was just simply that it's the 10% charge. That language stays exactly how it was in your most recent ordinance that amended a few things back, I believe it was in 2022, which was to take out the 10-day grace period. What is new then is 5.1 and 5.2. This is based on not only the request of your water clerk and your clerk treasurer, but also, and I suppose probably more importantly, the state board of accounts in the last audit. When a customer would be allowed to receive an adjustment on the bill for something like a waiver of a late charge, council has to have established a policy for that and given some direction on what they find appropriate decision-making within the clerk's office because it relates to fees, in this instance, late fees that you're charging your residents. And so this sets out the ability for some discretion to occur by the water clerk and the clerk treasurer for those specific examples that are there. But then also sets out the ability, I'm so sorry, my phone was not on mute. Also sets out the ability if a particular customer's situation doesn't qualify under one of those three kind of limited reasons, that there's a procedure that they could still request of the governing body, which right now is the town council, to request a waiver of the fee. Once in a while, you know, life throws curveballs and on top of that, we're all human. So this at least gives the ability for you as a board to decide if there should be a special exception given. The other part I would note very quickly is then back up on section three, the bottom of page two. We've tried to define better and present to you definitions for connection and parcel. Again, trying to prevent confusion from anyone involved, whether it be the council, anyone in the clerk treasurer's office, the water department, or of course, the residents of the town. You have defined vacant parcels in the past. Of course, you know, on various things such as your leaf pickup and, and fire protection. You defined connection in the past and when a parcel becomes unimproved, what is to happen? And so hopefully, these definitions that you see will give some better clarity on all of those things.
Okay. Thank you. The only thing I see wrong is my name is spelled wrong.
I just, well, I just saw, I mean, something in where, where you talk about the connection in section three. It's capital letter A, subparagraph, small letter. An owner whose parcel was once improved but becomes unimproved may submit or request the water connection be discontinued with the department, which will stop the base charge. I'm a, I think.
There's just, yeah.
So there's little things like that. So don't worry about those things.
No, I think we should worry about them, but I don't think you need.
Now, so do it to you. Okay. Got it. Or send it to Meg and Trista.
Yes. But I think you can approve this.
Okay.
On first reading, if you agree with the substance of it.
Got it. Thank you.
To address those. Any additions or changes with the questions in public?
Thank you. Get Joy's name.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance 2025-08 on water rates.
With the amendments that we discussed.
With the amendments that we discussed. Or any amendments that come to.
And edits.
They can just comment the next one, that.
Yeah. I'll second.
Well, I, oh.
There's a correction of that title.
And then I had a question about late fees as well. Because it talks about the last business day, but then I noticed today on the water bill that they're due by November 25th, which is the Tuesday before the Thanksgiving holiday, but then Wednesday is holiday. So I just, that can be worked out with the office apparently, but I don't want to nitpick.
I will confirm with Diane because her and I have talked about the dates and it, it's difficult to, and, and we'll check if this is correct because it's difficult for her to, with our system and the way it processes.
It is. I know.
That date.
Yeah.
So because we've, we've thought of ways, the problem is it falls on then a Saturday or Sunday.
Exactly. Right. That's, yeah.
Do her month-end process. So, but I will check on that to make sure we have it in here correctly.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Stop 29, public access walkway project. We discussed that already with Zach. Definition of golf cart as a recreational vehicle. It was brought up after the BZA where someone couldn't keep a boat in their side yard. Isn't a golf cart a recreational vehicle because that's what our ordinance says? You can't keep recreational vehicles in your front or your side yard. And we have an ordinance that we allow golf carts. I don't think we should allow golf carts and then tell people they can't park them anywhere. So I would, I would suggest just changing or just putting in that ordinance that golf carts are excluded as a recreational vehicle. Can we do that, Chris?
Yes, but it's in 154. So it's, it's in the zoning realm. So we're going to have to initiate it through the plan commission or here. But if, if there are some other things, but that is the fix. And to answer his question directly, yes, he's correct. The inquiry came, it is correct, it is recreational. We just need to, if that's the council and will be the APC's pleasure, just need to make the appropriate change to reconcile that.
Okay. Anita, can you put that on the APC agenda?
Okay.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance regarding porta-potties. I think I sent everyone the draft of the porta potty ordinance, which Anita and I put together. We didn't get any comments from anyone. One comment from Kendra, she wanted to change one word, which I did. So this comes with a favorable recommendation from the building commission. And I think now the next thing we usually do is put it on the website to get public comments.
Well, what is your intention? Is it to, to have some feedback before you take any formal action?
Yes.
So I would think that we should put, if you're okay with it, I will put it in the proper form and add the, the necessary authority language in it to put it in the ordinance form and then get that well in advance of next meeting. So she could post it and can kind of have some transparency and public input from there. Because is your intention to, if possible, pass it in December?
Yes.
Okay. I'll get that done.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Uh, any council comments? Uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
Um, make the motion to adjourn?
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.